It's us two. Oops, hang on. 6.1. Which is our first public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Michael Gino, the city attorney, and I will be presenting this item tonight. What you have before you for consideration is the first reading of an ordinance which would authorize the city manager to enter into a development agreement for the Marketplace redevelopment project. The purpose of a development agreement, of this particular development agreement, is to secure the provision of 33 affordable units which will be affordable to households of low income. It would secure immediate timelines for the development of the project to incur, including the public improvements and amenities, and in order to clarify the conditions of retaining vested rights for the developers, and also to provide the developer's certainty that city rules won't change provided the developer meets those construction milestones. And I'll be getting into each of these issues during the presentation. So the procedure for adopting a development agreement is that first the city council, I'm sorry, the planning commission first considers the agreement and provides a recommendation to the city council. The city council may then approve the agreement by adopting an ordinance and authorizing execution of this agreement. The planning commission did consider this item at its last meeting and did make a recommendation that the city council adopt the ordinance approving the development agreement. In order to approve the agreement, the city council must make two findings. First, that the agreement is consistent with the general plan and that the development agreement is in the public interest. And so I'll step through both of those required findings. First, in terms of consistency with the general plan, staff believes that this finding can be made. As you see here, there is a general planned land use policy that encourages redevelopment of the Marketplace and adjacent parcels to develop with a mix of uses and mid-to-high-rise development. The DA does allow for the development of the Marketplace site with a mix of residential units, including uses, including affordable units, retail uses, and it also encourages the redevelopment of the site with a mix of mid-rise development of high architectural quality. In addition, the DA increases, provides for an expanded Christie Avenue Park, and that is consistent with the park's open space and public facilities policy and the land use policy shown here on the slide. Furthermore, the DA authorizes the city manager to finalize and implement these two agreements that you see here, the Public Market Streets Property Exchange Agreement and the Public Market Streets Improvement Agreement. Those two agreements allow for, and provide for, the abandonment and vacation of the current Shell-Mount Street and the dedication to design and improvement of a new Shell-Mount Street and the addition of new 62nd, 63rd, and Market Drive streets. The addition of those realigned, of the realigned Shell-Mount Street and 62nd, 63rd, and Market Drive are consistent with the transportation element of the general plan, which shows those new streets as part of the general plan. Regarding the finding that the development agreement must be in the public interest, the DA, the development agreement provides for a greater degree of certainty in the planning process. It reduces the economic cost of development, allows the orderly planning of those services, and allocates costs of private and public resources. It also assures appropriate environmental review has been conducted as well. In addition, the DA provides project components that add to the neighborhood. It replaces the current surface parking lots that you see there now with structured parking, the addition of a grocery store, and again, new residential units, which also include affordable units. The DA also serves the public interest in that it provides for, it allows for an extended, expanded park, a realigned Shell-Mount Street, which in turn improves the circulation of traffic in the neighborhood. Getting to the issue of affordable units, the development agreement secures 33 units for low-income households in the residential parcels of A, C, and D, and that represents 6.9 of the total units in the project, and that's consistent with the provisions of our municipal code. The development agreement also concentrates those 33 affordable units in two- and three-bedroom units. It provides that those units would be constructed in the project and would be constructed sooner in time than units that would be built if the city had merely collected the impact fees. Regarding those fees, if the city were to only collect the impact fee, the impact fees, then the city would only be able, projected that the city would only be able to build 16 instead of the 33 units that are provided here through the DA. I'll touch on that further along in our fiscal analysis. And finally, the development agreement allows for those affordable units to be spread throughout the project alongside with the market rate units, which has been a longstanding policy of the city council. This table shows the breakdown of where, of what those units, where those units would be located and the breakdown of twos and threes. This is, this table is in the staff report. In parcel A, there would be 12 affordable units. None of those would be two or three bedrooms, and three of those would be studios and ones. In parcel C, we would have five units, three of which would be twos and threes, and two of those units be ones and studios, one in studio. Parcel D provides for 16 affordable units. 11 of them, 11 of them are twos and threes. Five of them would be two, would be studios and one bedrooms. Now, onto the issue of affordable units in rental projects. So, the Palmer decision, if you recall, the Palmer decision provided that a city cannot require affordable units to be built in a rental project, as that's a violation of the Costa-Hawkins Act. However, the case also noted that the city may provide, may allow for rental projects in a affordable rental project if the applicant voluntarily agrees to provide those units in exchange for city assistance. The developers here, in this case, have elected to provide those inclusionary units in exchange for city assistance. I'd like to preface the assistance, the discussion of the assistance by noting that the family-friendly design guidelines were intended to apply to projects that require a development bonus. However, the Marketplace PUD, which was approved in 2008, is not required to obtain that bonus and therefore is not required to build according to the family-friendly design guidelines. Those, you know, the PUD, as it was, as it was approved in 2008, was only subject to the regulations that were then in effect. That being said, going on to the assistance that the city is providing, the, as a result, through this development agreement, the city would be agreeing to reduce the number of two- and three-bedroom units in parcels A, C, and D from the numbers shown here, from 91 in parcel A to 84, to 84 units. Parcel C would go from 38 to 34, and parcel D would go from 117 to 113 units. And that's just a breakdown of those, of those numbers there.
Back really quick so I can take a note on that, thanks. Thank you.
In addition, the development agreement allows for an increase of six residential units in the project, and the additional units would be in parcels A, C, and D in these, in this configuration. Overall, that increase would go from 456 to 462 residential units. And then finally, the, the development agreement allows for 30 of the units to be flexible units or units that would not require strict adherence to the family-friendly design guidelines. The number of units and the location of those units is shown here on the slide. Parcel A would have 20 units, up to 20, 20 units allowed to be flexible units. Parcel C would have seven units allowed that flexibility in parcel.
What's a flexible unit again?
So, I will get into that in just a second. So, if you recall, the city council adopted these family-friendly design guidelines earlier this year. While the developer, developers are not subject to adherence to the family flexible guidelines, they have nevertheless agreed to build to those design guidelines. That being said, they also would like, are asking for the flexibility from strict adherence to those family-friendly design guidelines as to these 30 units. Specifically, they're looking to have flexibility or not be required to adhere to these three guidelines in the family-friendly design guidelines. J-53 is regarding the provision of one master suite. J-54 regards the separation of sleeping areas from living areas, and J-55 is the provision of each bedroom with access to a full bathroom without having to traverse through the living areas of the unit. Other provisions of the development agreement, as I said, the, the development agreement includes the provision for these, for this exchange and Streets Improvement Agreement, which will be, which will allow for the relocation and realignment of Shell-Mount Street, which will also be tied to a tentative map that will be brought to the Planning Commission for their review and approval. The tentative map will show the exact location of the alignment and where all the, all the improvements will be placed. The DA also allows for the relocation of the parcel A pedestrian easement. So that's the easement that allows pedestrians to go from Shell-Mount Street across the surface parking lot to access the Amtrak pedestrian tower. That will need to be relocated, that easement will need to be moved and relocated as part of the development of the project, and so the DA allows for the city manager to finalize those negotiations for relocation of that easement. The DA also contemplates the creation of a master art, I'm sorry, a public art master plan for the entire, for the entire project site. So it'll consolidate the art requirements for all the various parcels into one master plan, hopefully come up with some sort of cohesive theme for the entire, for the entire Marketplace project. And finally, in addition, the, the development agreement also provides for the expansion of the Christie Avenue Park. This item will be brought to you at, at the second reading of the development agreement. Going on with other terms of the, terms of the agreement, so the term of the development agreement would be for a 12-year term with up to three additional years under certain conditions. The agreement provides for construction milestones that the developers must maintain in order to retain their vested rights. Those construction milestones are here in those bullet points. First, the Christie Avenue Park must be completed within five years after the effective date of the agreement. The developer must then, must substantially complete construction of either a second building or the Shell-Mount realignment within five years. Complete construction of the next new building and the Shell-Mount realignment within eight years of the effective date. And note that the construction of the building on parcel F does not qualify for a building as that is just a small parcel and, and doesn't count as construction of a new building. Onto the issue of vested rights and fees. The development agreement grants the developers vested rights to develop and construct the project in accordance with the project approvals. No changes to the city's policies or regulations would apply to the public market, which would limit those uses, limit the density or intensity, maximum height or size of the proposed buildings, impose fees or exactions or conditions other than those already provided by city law, the current approvals or the development agreement, or limit the timing phasing or development of the property. Regarding fees, the developer agrees to pay any fees, assessments, and monetary, non-monetary exactions in connection with the project. The developer will pay any new or increased taxes, which are uniformly imposed and necessary to complete with, comply with the requirements of federal or state regulation, which are adopted or enacted after the effective date, or which are uniformly imposed and regularly necess, reasonably necessary to comply with the requirements of other government agencies. The developer also agrees to pay all processing fees, inspection fees, monitoring fees, general plan maintenance fees, and other fees imposed by the city. Regarding the environmental analysis, so, an EIR was, a final EIR was certified by the city council for the Marketplace project back in 2008. The final, that EIR was applied to the project as a whole as part of the city's actions, and the city adopted findings regarding the impact and impacts and mitigation measures, including a statement of overriding consideration. Since then, the, there have been no substantial changes to the project, and there are no circumstances, circumstances under which the project will be undertaken, and no new information of substantial importance exists, which would require preparation of a subsequent EIR. Regarding the fiscal impact, so, as to the development of the 33 in project units, again, those 33 units represent 6.9 of total units, which is consistent with the city's affordable housing program. If the DA is not approved, then the developers would be required to pay the city's affordable housing impact fee and not provide the affordable units. That fee is approximately $20,500 per unit. The breakdown for each of the parcels A, C, and D is shown here in this table, which is pulled from the staff report, and all told the developer would be required to pay impact fees of approximately $9.4 million. However, the cost to the city to construct affordable units, assuming a, a cost of about $570,000, would require the city to expend about $18.8 million to, to construct the 33 units that are provided by the development agreement. Meanwhile, the number of units buildable by receipt of the $9.4 million is approximately 16 units. So in other words, the city would only be able to, to build about 16 units with a $9.4 million that would, it would receive in impact fees. Therefore, in comparing the, the development agreement versus the impact fees, the development agreement provides for more affordable units than what the city would be able to build on its own. It provides those units in the project and spread throughout the project adjacent to and along with, alongside with market rate units. And those affordable units would be built on an immediate basis rather than the future in that the city would, if the city were to build the units itself, it would have to identify a project site, obtain control of the land, and then construct the units. As I mentioned, the planning commission considered this item at its July meeting, and they recommend, they, they recommended that the city council adopt the development agreement after they found that the general plan consistency and public interest findings could be made, and they also made a determination that there are no new impacts on the project that would require further environmental review. Therefore, the staff recommendation is that you introduce this item, this ordinance by title only. You open the public hearing and take public testimony and adopt the first reading of the ordinance. The developer team here is, is here as well, and I think they have a short presentation.
Yeah, come on up and do that. Then we'll ask for clarifying questions from council, and then.
Thank you.
Proceed as you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Mark Stephan. I'm the president of City Center Realty Partners. We're the owner and master developer of the Public Market. We bought the Public Market nearly three years ago with the goal of creating a destination, a destination gathering place for the citizens of Emeryville, where they could come, shop, dine, hang out with their friends and neighbors. This would be a vast improvement upon what is now available there. As you may know, the project was initiated in 2005 by TMG, and it received its PDP approval in 2008. Since that time, we've participated in at least a dozen study sessions, achieved approvals on the park, parcel C, parcel D, and all that remains is parcel B and parcel F. We are excited about bringing this development to the city, a project that would include a renovated and updated food hall, an organic grocery store, and expanded new park with a children's play area, and a dog park, and 462 units of needed housing, and provide new revitalized retail uses, a project that all the citizens can benefit from and be proud of. To reiterate, I'd like to reiterate some of the project benefits. From fiscal point of view, this project will strengthen the local economy by providing new employment opportunities. It'll generate tax revenues to pay the cost of maintaining adequate infrastructure facilities. It'll contribute substantial impact fees to the transportation parks and recreation affordable housing funds. On environmental sustainability, we will be conducting environmental soil management, i.e., we're going to be evacuating toxic soil from where the park is going to be expanded and replacing it with fresh, clean soil. We'll be replacing surface parking levels with structured parking and low-impact development stormwater treatment to reduce the amount of toxic runoff that currently happens on the surface parking lots. From a transportation improvement point of view, we'll be realigning Shell-Mount Street to the west directly in front of Marketplace Tower. We'll be adding three new street segments, 62, or 62nd Street, 63rd, and Market Drive, and thereby establishing a more urban street grid and urban landscape that will enhance the aesthetic of the project area. And all those streets will have public easements on them, so they'll be fully accessible to the public. We're going to implant or implement a transportation demand program to reduce vehicle trips through innovative programs such as car share hubs, preferential car and van pool, and bike share. Improve accessibility to AC transit and Emery Go-Round. Improve bike circulation through new, very visible bike lanes we'll be implementing throughout the project. We're relocating the existing pedestrian easement across from parcel A to make a better-linked Amtrak station, so it's no longer through a parking lot, but through a landscaped Highline Park through the parcel A. We'll be relocating a sanitary sewer, and we'll be connecting to recycled water. From the start, we cooperated with the planning staff to incorporate the family-friendly design guidelines. Contrary to the erroneous reports in the media, we have cooperated. The parcel D FDP approval for 223 units conforms to the family-friendly guidelines and was endorsed by the city's family-friendly design consultant, Arnold Mammalia. The PDP approval for parcel C, for 66 units, also conforms to the family-friendly design guidelines and was endorsed by the city's family-friendly design consultant, Arnold Mammalia. For parcel A, which will be in front of the planning commission Thursday night, those units also conform to the family-friendly guidelines and have been endorsed by the city's consultant, Arnold Mammalia. Earlier tonight, Michael talked about section 7.2C in the proposed development agreement, and this would allow for flexibility in the implementation of some of these guidelines, including the provision for some flexibility of unit design. Our take on this was that we want to provide some flexibility for families because they may not all want the same layout. But, again, in the interest of cooperation, if the city's desires to have all the family-friendly units be the same, we're willing to consider taking out that section so that they fully conform to the family-friendly guidelines. When the city council expressed a desire to have inclusionary affordable housing, we cooperated again and worked with the city staff in good faith to develop this DA. The DA would provide a mechanism for us to provide 33 affordable housing units that could be built next year. This cooperation comes at a real cost to the project. We agreed to purchase the Public Market. The price was based on a development budget. Since the acquisition, the city has enacted the new housing and traffic mitigation and park fees last year, and that together adds about $14 million of cost to our project. The cost of providing the additional two- and three-bedrooms, as well as the 33 affordable units, adds another $10 million to the cost. These are real, real costs, real dollars that have pushed our budget to the limit. In short, we've acted in good faith. We view our relationship with the city of Emeryville as a partnership, not as a two-sided adversarial negotiating deal. To operate as partners, that means both sides have to be realistic. For us, that means including affordable housing and configuring the layouts for your family-friendly specifications. For the city, it means accepting that we're a business with budgets to meet, and we have investors that we have to work with. Time is money, and the same goes. We must get started on building this project, or it'll reach a point where it's no longer economic viable for us. The citizens want the amenities now, and we don't, and you don't want them to go somewhere else where they're going to spend their free time. We want them to be able to enjoy the new park and the other amenities we're going to be bringing. Over the last three years, we've demonstrated more than a willingness to work with the city by the many meetings we've attended, the community stakeholder meetings, the various city committees, the planning commissions, the city councils. This has been a collaborative process from the beginning, and we think it's made for a better project. We've changed our plans to meet your expectations relative to design, affordable housing, and family friendliness. We've done our part and acted in good faith to meet the city, to meet the city's goals. We respectfully request the city council to follow through and approve this development agreement. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Hong with Avalon Bay, and we're partners with City Center Realty Partners with Mark Stephan, Mayor Atkins, and council members. Mark did a really good job of summarizing, you know, our thoughts on it, and I won't be repeating them all. What I wanted to do is just briefly, I'll say, reintroduce myself and Avalon Bay as we do, even though we've been working with the city for, you know, and with the City Center Realty Partners for the past year and a half or so. We do view this, you know, as, you know, the start and not an end of a long-term partnership with the city in working through this development. We, during this time, we worked with a, we're a very capable staff, and we believe we've come up with a project that we're really excited about and that we do believe meets, meets all your policies. We have, Avalon Bay have developed many housing communities here in the East Bay, as well as in San Francisco, and in the South Bay, and, and San Jose over the past 20 years or so. Specifically, we've developed something off of University up in Berkeley. You may have driven by it. We've developed projects in Walnut Creek and in Dublin, and, and those include properties at the Pleasant Hill Bart Station and at the Dublin Bart Station. And as we have owned and operate those properties, we, we are not in the business of building and selling. We do own and operate internally, so we take very much care and believe that we're part of the community as we build and operate these, these apartments. At the same time, while we do that, we work collaboratively with not only those cities, but with all the various agencies involved, you know, and in those cases, including County, Bart, and at the time redevelopment agencies that were, were in existence. I do believe that, you know, any of those agencies would vouch for our, our effort for the quality of the buildings that we do, that where we promote the community and work with our collaboration and keep to our integrity to work throughout these developments. Our mission statement on our business card that I carry around is creating a better way to live. We understand the city's desire to attract more families, and we're proud to say that many families do call our properties around the Bay Area home. So in working with the city, we have listened intently to the desires of the city council, the planning commission, and the community, and we have worked very hard to incorporate the shared goals into these plans to create this better way to live. And this includes the design of the buildings, the streetscape, the landscape, and obviously the units themselves, you know, and with that, you know, the 50% twos and three bedrooms, the family-friendly units that we've worked very hard with staff, and also providing the inclusionary housing versus the end-of-the-fee. So again, we've worked tirelessly and in good faith with the city staff and everyone else, and we believe we've addressed the comments from planning commission and city council, and we know that we can build a successful development that the city and the community can be proud of. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments by the... Any other comments by the developers? All right. I will open the public hearing soon, but are there any clarifying questions from the council only at this point?
Yes.
Yeah, Diane?
I have a question for staff. So, Mr. Geena, in your presentation, you mentioned that there was a 6.9% of inclusionary affordable housing units, and that was, the provenance of that number is in Emeryville municipal code, and I was wondering if you could describe that affordable housing program in a little more detail, so I understand where that number came from in the negotiation process.
Well, sure. The, as, the, the city's, the city's planning regulations have a provision for inclusionary units, and the city council adopted those regulations June of last year when they adopted the rest of their, the rest of the fees, including the housing impact fee. The city, in adopting that ordinance, the city had conducted a NEXUS study that studied, you know, the impact of new development on future housing in the city. And the result, you know, and the result of that study, there was a range essentially of impact fees which the city could support, high and a low range. And there was also, as a result of that, a, the city council had made a decision as to where to place its fees, somewhere within that range. And as part of that discussion as well, there was also a discussion of the modeling that was done as part of the, as part of the NEXUS study was the number of, the percentage of affordable units that the city would also be able to impose. And as, essentially, as a policy decision, the city had decided that based on the NEXUS study that it would come in at a 6.9% level. That's essentially, that's the short answer to your question, is that as a result of the NEXUS studies that the city had done in support of its housing impact fees, it had come to this, this particular number, 6.9%, as the affordable number, and then the housing impact fee of, I forget what it was, it was in the slide.
Okay. So, if this just happened last year, this, the application of this number to development agreement has not happened?
This, well, this number has not been applied to, I mean, the idea is that we would be applying this number to the development agreement, because when we were, when we were looking at it, negotiating with the development team about the number of affordable in, in project units that they would be required to build, you know, we're looking for the standard, and the standard is the provisions that are currently called for in our planning regulations. So that was the basis for using the 6.9 number, because that was, that's what our regulations call for.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Scott?
So, Emeryville seems like it has a slightly different interpretation of low income versus very low income than the state does. Like, when I looked at the corresponding state regulation that was cited in the document, the state says that low income was 70% of the area median income, whereas, is it true our, our city says it can be 80%, up to 80%?
Right. I mean, our, our regulations provide that there could be up to 80%. And low income, there are sort of different definitions of low income, but, but our, the Emeryville ordinance provides that low income is for households up to 80%. And
I believe that's based on ABAG, RENA numbers?
That's right. Charlie, could you confirm that?
Yes.
Right. So, so the Emeryville, the Emeryville code provides for defining low income for households up to 80%.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
When, when we are looking at and considering the idea of city assistance, why isn't the vacating of a public street considered assistance by the city? Because without vacating Shellmount, the developer would not be able to construct parcel B.
Well, it's, it's part of, I mean, it certainly is part of the negotiation, the back and forth that the parties have entered into in order to allow for the project to be developed and the development agreement to take place. You know, the idea is that the relocation of Shellmount Street is, you know, certainly, while a benefit to them, is also a benefit to us in that it would improve the circulation of the area and also allow for the addition of these additional streets in the area. You know, is it a, is it a benefit? You know, we certainly see it as assistance in the form, in the sense that we're, you know, that allow, you know, by provoking for the realignment, you know, we're allowing for the development to take place as they've proposed, and it certainly provides for, you know, the development of the project, for the parcel B project, which is something that they're asking for.
Right. Because that, by doing that, by vacating a city street, I think that's a significant benefit. The plan creates, in effect, parcel B. They get 450 parking spaces and structured parking and 26,500 square feet of retail with the city vacating that. So while circulation is something that we may be looking for when we look at a city map, we're essentially creating another parcel to be developed that has, I think, probably tremendous benefit to the developer. And I, when I'm reading the development agreement, this is one of the things that I'm considering. I think that the, the city is, that this is a form of city assistance, because no one else could, could provide this. This is something that we're doing as a city. I'll reserve my comments till we hear from the public.
Yes. Yeah, I'll grant that.
All we're doing is trading out where this current Shellmount is for where the road comes in front of the office tower. Same amount of land. We could build this parking structure where the, where the, our property is now, leave the road the way it is. What the road, by realigning it, makes for two-sided retail, makes for better retail, but we could still build it where it is, and we could build the parking where it is. And it comes at a big cost for us to relocate that road. Costs us a lot less money to leave the road where it is.
I would still think, though, that it's a benefit to have the double-facing retail as well, and that to be able to have the road and have the retail on both sides of the street is certainly a benefit to the developer.
It's a benefit to us, it's a benefit to the community, and it's all a function of what cost.
All right, thanks. Any other questions?
Yeah, Ruth?
Yeah.
Michael, will you clarify for, for me and for the audience? The present Shellmount is vacated, and there's a new Shellmount. What is the ownership of the new Shellmount?
The new Shellmount will be ours.
It's still a public street.
Right.
So, you're really not talking about a tran, a value here. They're picking up the tab for building a new roadway that's going to belong to the city, and yet it will improve the circulation. I don't see where they're getting any big benefit out of this. They're, you know, they're realigning the streets that benefits us and our traffic. That's just, I did, but I just want to make sure that we still have ownership of Shellmount.
I have a question for you. Wasn't that part of what was approved in 2008?
The
Under the PUD?
Yes, it was.
I'd move to read by title only.
Could we, before we do that, could we
You have to introduce to read by title only
Sure, sure.
And then have the public hearing.
Yes, thank you.
Move along.
Is there a second? To read by title only? I'll second it.
Thank you.
Do we formally have to take a vote on this?
Yes, please.
Okay. All those in favor to read by title only, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed to read by title only?
I'd like a voice vote on this.
Yeah, let's go ahead.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Asher?
No.
Councilmember Donahue?
No.
Councilmember Martinez?
No.
Okay, so then we get to read the whole ordinance.
May I complete the vote? Thank you. Vice Mayor Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Atkins?
Yes. Right. I want to say, I really, I'm sorry, you had to read the whole thing because we couldn't get a majority vote here. So, that was eight pages that our city attorney had to read. So, with that, I open the public hearing, and we'll take public testimony. Come on up to the podium, and you can, anybody who wants to speak can stand behind the current speaker, so just come on up. Mr. Carpio, you're first.
Thank you very much for reading the Bible. I didn't have that much to say when I married my wife. Okay. The first thing I want to mention here, I didn't hear a single word about energy or efficiency of the building. Do we have any solar panel like we have here in the city hall? I mean, we are, I think, there is something that has been missing perhaps by the developer who are not looking for a feasibility that is sustainable. In other words, if you do not invest at the beginning, how would you mind having profit in mid-course or at the end of it? We have already the senior center there. Indeed, the roof, roof leaks. After we fix, it leak again. And that's because basically, the roofing material, as explained to you, expand and contract, and the water will seep, and next thing you know, you'll have, you know, mark on the ceiling. So, I think here there is an element of prudence that hasn't been laid in the public, I haven't heard it, in which the developer plans to do something about the environment. I'm talking about the energy. I'm talking about energy. There is, none of the developers say they are going to pump the groundwater that is going to waste the hydraulic mechanism of the tide. We talk about millions and millions of gallons here. So, here, there is something that is incomplete in my mind here, and I think the developer should make something other than a city council agreement that we just heard there, in which people who are vested in environment and energy and sustainability should be satisfied to read something real short, real short. Thank you.
Can I look at the, this overhead projector usable?
Could someone help him with that?
Okay, first of all, I'd like to say that I, you know, I sort of disagree with what the mayor just, when the mayor sort of admonished her colleagues for forcing the city attorney to read aloud the actual ordinance or the development agreement. I think it was actually, it was a nice thing. It was sort of like we got to see how sausage is made. And there's a lot of absurdities in what we're, we just heard. I was following along, and it's pretty disturbing. Okay, I don't know if I'm, do we get to talk about 6.2 later, or do we, do I
This is a public hearing for 6.1.
But the 6.2 is the realignment. Do we get to talk about that separately?
That'll be separate.
Okay. I'm just gonna read from my blog, the Emeryville Tattler, why you should not approve this development agreement that is before you tonight. Contrary to what the developer said, this project is not family-friendly. He's asking for, the developer is asking to be let out of the family-friendly regulations. Now, I understand he doesn't legally have to do that, but let's, we need to understand what's really going on here. This family flexible housing idea of his is a euphemism, and in fact, this project makes Emeryville worse. It makes our town worse in terms of ratio, ratio of families per, number of units in our town. This project makes our town get worse. We have less, that lowers that ratio. So we get worse in terms of families. So you need to understand that. If you vote yes, you're voting yes to making our town get worse in terms of families. It also makes our town get worse in terms of park acreage per resident in our town. So we have a ratio right now of number of residents per acreage of parks. If we say yes to this project, even though it increases Christie Avenue Park by .4 acres or whatever, the residents per acreage ratio will go up. So we're making our town worse from an open, parks and open space perspective. So we are making our town get worse if we say yes to this on that regard. We're also making our town get worse in terms of affordability. You take, right now, there's a ratio, you take the number of affordable units per resident in Emeryville, right now, there's a ratio. This project, if we put, if we move forward, even though we get 33 units, it's actually going to take us backwards in terms of affordability for our town. We're making our town worse in terms of affordability. And then lastly, this project is making our town get worse in terms of square footage locally serving non-formular retail per resident in Emeryville. It's making our town get worse in that regard as well. I don't think we should do this. Thank you.
Thank you for giving me a moment to speak. I really came up here to talk today about family-friendly housing. As a member of the school board, and I'm here only speaking for myself, I think it's critical that we increase the number of families in Emeryville. They're the people who stick around and help build the community. I just got back from a family trip to the Midwest and spent some time in Mason City and saw a town that is losing families left and right, and what it's doing to the retail and the infrastructure of the town. I think it's really critical that, you know, they're getting older, but we can't afford to have young people who come here, stay for a few years, and then move to the suburbs when it's time to have families. We need families here now for the schools, for the sense of stability in town. I think it's really important. As I sat here listening to the discussion of this and listening to the ordinance, which I enjoyed, I, I think it's really critical that we listen to what the developer says when they talk about meeting that 6.9% of family-friendly or affordable. It's amazing to me that you round that specific number and not just, hey, we'll just do 10%. They're not doing this because it doesn't benefit them, they're doing it for themselves. He said it himself when he said, "We don't have to move the street." If he didn't have to move the street, he wouldn't move the street. He needs the double-sided retail to make the money he wants. It's a benefit for him to get Shellmount and be able to build on top of that, or else they wouldn't even proposed it. That's how you know that it's of value to them and that they want it. Okay? So I think ask for them to make fully family-friendly housing. Don't let them have flexibility. That's another way, and I don't know that I agree with Mr. Donahue, that it, in effect, gives it away, but really, hold them to the law, because they're not going to do it on their own. They're not going to do anything that doesn't interest their profits. They talked about it.
I agree with him on that.
Can you just, can you just address us, please?
Sorry.
And don't make it personal.
I'm not making it personal, I'm simply saying
Just address us.
You know, it really is, they're going to do the minimum, and so you have to hold them to that at least. Thank you.
I want to make a comment. The other day, I looked at all the videos that I had from this project, and it was like 27 videos. I think this project has come to the public meetings probably twice as much as many other projects, and they can't solve all the problems that we have, but we're going to get like a new downtown, we're going to get a supermarket, the park will double in size. I mean, yeah, we don't have enough ratio of park for people in the city, but that's a, that's a big problem. And moving the roads been in the plans for about, I don't know, 10 years. They're really complying with what the city wants to see the road moved, because it's to the advantage of the city and the residents here. So I think it would be a mistake to not move forward with this project. Thank you.
Any other public comment before I close the public hearing? Okay, public hearing's closed. Now we get, council gets to discuss this.
Can I ask a question of staff? 63rd Street? Just to, I know you've talked this through with us. No, 62nd Street, Charlie, is that what it is? Is a, is a pri- Is a, is a private, no, that's what I'm looking at. Yeah, 63rd Street is a private road. Can you tell us what that means in effect, that it's a private road?
Well, the intent is that all the new streets, 63rd, 62nd, and Market Drive will be accessible to the public 24/7. The roadways by vehicles, although the plaza may be closed to vehicular traffic, and pedestrians on the sidewalks. We haven't finalized, I don't believe, what the exact form of ownership would be, whether the underlying fee would be dedicated to the city or whether it would be, continue to be owned by the developer. But there would, in any case, there would be an easement over all of those streets that would allow public access 24/7.
Okay. And the PUD was approved in 2008. The parking that we have there right now, my tally is, what is it, 1,295 parking spaces right next to the transit center? Is, are, is this development using our current parking minimums? Or are they adhering to what was approved in 2008?
The latter. They are not subject to the current regulations. They're subject to the ordinance that was passed in 2008 approving the PUD.
Okay. Any other questions?
Finally, there's a section, I'm trying to find my notes here on this, there's a section in the development agreement with language around initiatives and referendums. And I want to ask the city attorney whether we've had language about initiatives and moratoria in other, in previous development agreements, or if this is new with this development agreement.
Certainly with, in terms of, and you're talking about Section 6.7.
Yeah, on page 18, 6.7.
Right. So certainly in previous development agreements, we've had similar language that essentially says that, that is similar to this. I will note that probably the one item that we have not, the language that we haven't included in previous iterations of development agreements would specifically call out moratoria. But initiatives, referenda, you know, that other language is all, has all been consistent in our development agreements.
Okay. And that's a concern of mine as well, because moratoria have to have findings around public health and safety in order to be enacted, and also developers have a mechanism in order to be carved out from a moratorium, as we saw when many of the developers came up and talked to the council when it was proposed here. So I think exempting the project from that is also, is a mistake. I was really glad, though, Mr. Stefan, to hear your discussion about family-friendly as opposed to family flexible. That's important to me. I don't want to see our family-friendly guidelines that we've been working on for years be watered down or altered in their very first application. So that, that really matters to me. I still feel that the unit mix is, is still, is extending a problem that we have in town with studios and one bedrooms. And looking at the cost of rent right now in Emeryville and the cost of rent over in the marketplace, you know, you have folks that are basically paying for the studios over there $2,328 a month, and one bedrooms $2,500 a month. I, I'm focused on affordability and I want to see us get affordability because those, those prices mean that you have to make $90,000 a year for one bedroom. And in addition, the, also the apartments over there also charge for parking. So I, I, looking at this development agreement, I really think that the city is giving assistance in vacating Shellmount. And it's, I want to support this project, but it's right next to a transit center. It has a lot of parking, right next to a transit center. And I think we need more, certainly more affordability in, in our, in the development agreement. That's, those are some of the things that are really important to me.
I'd like to note that Mark was being generous with us in saying about the family-friendly, willing to have all the units be that. And the actual amount that he proposed earlier was actually a small amount in relation to the total units. Wasn't very much. I think the main issue really is for our vision as a city. We want more families to be here to have their children in school, to have more stability. We're not just people here for a couple of years where they transfer and transfer out. That was, you know, something that we were trying to achieve. And this is the middle of town, and our general plan actually allows for more intensive development than this proposal, greater building heights. And I just think that of our town average of something like 11.7% affordable units now, and the most that this project would give us is 6.9. It's just, it's, it's going backwards in our vision. And I think that somehow we have to allow this site to perhaps be a little more intensively developed, a little less parking perhaps, and at the same time, more affordability. I think that's, that's what we really need. We need to have that for the stability of our town. And I think that we should negotiate for that vision, for this site more. And I think we have the chance to get it. I think the site could, could support more affordability, greater density perhaps, and less parking because it's a transit center. And I think, I think we could get with what we want, maybe with this developer, if we negotiate a little bit more.
Any other?
So I'd like to echo my colleague's concerns around the family-friendly guidelines, and I'd also like to appreciate the developer for offering that family guidelines, family-friendly guidelines could be adhered to for those units rather than be known as flexible units. And I also had concerns regarding affordability, and I have full faith that staff did negotiate with this number as their, you know, their guideline, because there is not a process by which they would have been able to come back to us, find out what we wanted, and, and go back to the developer. That said, I think when we come back to our by-right development and our development bonus systems as council in September, I think that number's going to change. And I think even as a negotiation point for this development agreement, that 6.9 should be a beginning and not the end of a negotiation. And I just want to iterate that I, I want to see this project go forward. I am a proponent of getting more housing in Emeryville. I'm, we're, I don't want to see developments stymied, but I, you know, our council, since I've been on board, we've been talking about rehashing how to integrate our values and our concerns and those of our community with the process of planning. And so this is a sticky process. It's not comfortable necessarily, and I appreciate you coming here and being willing to hear out what we have to say tonight, even if it's not 100% rah-rah just yet.
All right. Nora, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I would like to say something. I support this project. It's not a perfect project. It certainly doesn't address all the aims and values and the vision of the majority of the council, but it is, it's a good start and in a place which I consider at the present time to be an obsolete center. I mean, it's crumbling as we speak. So I take that into consideration, and I look at the process that the developers have gone through. This project is consistent with the general plan and the specific plans. I believe it to be in the public interest because right now it is not being utilized to its best and highest value. And I place a high value on our planning commission. These people work very, very hard. They, they spend a lot of time, and when we get a unanimous decision from them saying that they believe it's, we should be moving forward, I take that very heavily in consideration. I understand Jack and Scott and Diane, your wish for more affordable housing. Unfortunately, we don't have the tools we once had. So if your desire is to sit down and try to get the developers to do more, state law prohibits us from putting the arm on developers in that way. If they offer something freely, that's a different thing. But in terms of real hard negotiation, we don't have a big hammer. So the question of affordability is a serious one throughout the Bay Area. Actually, it's throughout the coast of California. We don't have the funds presently to really do much about this. I, I'm particularly impressed by the fact that rather than just have the impact fees, the housing impact fees, we get double the amount of affordable units if we went ahead with the developer agreements. It's clear to me that the majority of this council does not want to move forward with this. I believe that you're making a mistake. I believe that there is, there may, and I'll have to ask Michael about this. What is the alternative if the majority of the council says, "No, we're not going to have this development agreement"? What are the vested rights that the developer already has to proceed with building?
Well, there are no vested rights right now, but the, the idea is that if the development agreement is in place, then what will happen is that, or I'm sorry, if there is no development agreement, the developer already has approvals to build Parcels C and D, and they will proceed to build those parcels, those units pursuant to the, to the conditions that were approved by the planning commission. You know, you'll note that the developer will not be obligated to build those units according to the family-friendly design guidelines, and certainly you're not going to be getting
I understand that.
The affordable units in the project as well.
So in my mind, there is a real, this is not a perfect development agreement. I don't think anybody says it is, either the developer or the city, but it is a workable agreement. And I hope you seriously consider this, because we, we have a lot to lose here. We will have a property that perhaps they'll go ahead and build, which they have the entitlements to build, maybe not. But what we don't get is, we don't get doubling the affordable units. We don't get the certainty that they're going to continue to build, or they lose their vested rights. This timing of development is critically important, and I think we tend to just not look at that, but it is important, that there's, there is a pattern which they have to adhere to in a timely fashion. So those are my remarks on this.
All right. I want to, I want to speak to this project also, which is, and again, Mr. Stefan, thank you for your flexibility. Thank you for your cooperation. It seems as though up until tonight, what the city asked, you did, and I appreciate that tremendously. I want to, I just want to talk about the overall benefits that this project gives. When TMG owned it, it, before it sold its entitlements and sold the project, it had acquired the first LEED certification for neighborhood development in the country with this project, because of the sustainability, because of the urban infill, because everybody recognizes that an ocean of surface parking is outdated and not in the best or highest use. And while my particular desire was to get the first LEED for neighborhood development certification for the Center for Community Life, I was pleased that TMG had gone ahead and had acquired that based on the PUD. And what that reflects to me is a holistic view at many of the things that we value. And so I want to speak to those things, other things that the project brings, because it breaks up a super block with new street segments, which are very hard to do in this city, and as we know, we're, we're not well-connected internally. So the addition of more streets is very hard to come by, and this project would do that. It would enlarge and improve the park, and we're desperately underparked. It does provide more affordable units than if we just took in Lufy's. And we've all recognized that in Lufy's don't come close to the cost of actually constructing the same number of units. That point's been made earlier. I appreciate the fact that you were going to take out that flexibility thing around the guidelines and could have just done straight family-friendly design guidelines. I think this could have been the first opportunity to actually realize that. The improved amenities, the grocery store and the public facilities are a benefit to Emeryville as a whole, not just for the developer and that project. And I want to speak to creating a new building alongside the railroad, because the rail traffic is probably going to triple coming out of the Port of Oakland, and to have a new building there would help buffer the noise very close to the train station. And as much as I've been wanting to see railroad quiet zones on our grade crossings, they're still going to have to blow a horn when they approach the station and when they leave the station, and providing more structure there would really block that noise. And no one's really talked about the benefits to the public as a whole about the street realignment allowing for a new building. So I think when you look at all the things that we value, this project with its LEED and D certification is kind of the epitome of what is recognized as smart infill. And so I want to say and go on the record publicly, I think the benefits far outweigh the shortcomings that City Center Realty Partners is putting forward and Avalon and all the partners that have come into this, because it addresses so many issues in the general plan and does its part to further so many of those other goals. So I do support this project. I do appreciate the very lengthy and public process, and I think it's a shame if it doesn't go forward tonight. But so with that, there's a proposed ordinance and to vote on. So I would accept a motion to approve the ordinance, and I'll second it. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Asher.
No.
Councilmember Donahue.
No.
Councilmember Martinez.
No.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor Atkin.
Aye. So given the fact that that didn't pass, does 6.2 become moot? Which is our second public hearing for the night?
Not necessarily, no. I mean... I mean, no.
Okay.
We could proceed with that presentation.
All right, so we'll move to the second public hearing, which is about vacating a portion of Shellmount Street. And so I assume you're up for the staff report.
I am, thank you.
Okay.
I don't know if they don't approve the motion by time.
Just a moment to set up. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. So what you have before you is a resolution for vacation of a portion of Shellmount Street. The staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution attached to your staff report to vacate that portion of Shellmount Street pursuant to the provisions of the Streets and Highways Code. The vacation would be subject to the design, construction, dedication and acceptance by the city of the new Shellmount Street alignment. What I'll do is briefly, hop back here and show you the portion of Shellmount Street that we're talking about. So, excuse me. So here, this shows the current alignment of Shellmount Street. These are the railroad tracks at the top of the page here and north is this way. And so this is the, this is the portion of Shellmount Street that is, that we're talking about. And
I think it's not on.
Not on.
Sorry, I'll just use this. And, and this map shows where the, where Shellmount would be realigned. The procedure for abandoning a street requires that the city council find that the abandonment would be consistent with the general, general plan. The government code also provides that the planning commission must first make a recommendation to the city council as to consistency of those actions with the general plan. Thereafter, the city council would adopt a resolution finding that abandonment and vacation of the existing Shellmount right of way and acceptance of the new dedication would be consistent with the general plan. Sorry, that was, as to, that was an old slide that shouldn't have been in there. As for the, so the property exchange agreement and the streets improvement agreement, which were attachments to the development agreement but could be still brought separately to the city council for your consideration, those agreements provide for the implementation of the tentative map, which will be considered and to be approved by the city council, by the planning commission. Those agreements would require City Center to grant the city an irrevocable offer to dedicate the public market streets, thank you, as a condition of the tentative map approval. And those public, and those public market streets would be the realigned Shellmount, 62nd and 63rd Street, Streets and Market Drive. The streets improvement, pursuant to the streets and improvement agreement, City Center will design and construct the street improvements pursuant to the tentative map and its related conditions of approval to the satisfaction of the city engineer. Thereafter, the city would accept the offer of dedication and only at that point would the city be obligated to transfer title of the current Shellmount Street to City Center to allow them to, to, well, to transfer the title. In terms of the general plan consistency, the streets exchange improvement, the street, the exchange agreement, property exchange agreement and the streets improvement agreement effectuate the abandonment and vacation of the current Shellmount Street along with the dedication, design and improvement and acceptance of the, of the new marketplace streets, the realigned Shellmount Street, 62nd, 63rd Street and Market Drive. All of that, the, the realigned Shellmount Street and the new 62nd, 63rd Streets and Market Drive are consistent with the transportation element in the general plan. Figure 3.1 of the general plan shows those new streets there. And, and so the staff recommendation is that the realigned Shellmount Street and the addition of these new city streets would be consistent with those provisions of the general plan. In terms of the vacation procedure, the Streets and Highways Code provides that the city council adopt a resolution stating facts under which the summary vacation is made. Those facts are listed here in the bullet points and are in your staff report as well, namely that the vacation would be superseded by a realigned Shellmount Street, that the exchange agreement would grant the city an irrevocable offer to dedicate, including the Shellmount realignment. The streets improvement agreement would require City Center to design and construct the streets in accordance with the tentative map and the conditions of approval. The city would accept the dedication after the construction is complete to the satisfaction of the city engineer and only at that point would acceptance of the new Shellmount Street is the city obligated to transfer title to the current Shellmount Street. In addition, the resolution provides for a temporary bike and ped easement across parcel A. That's needed to, the, it's needed to reserve, the reservation of the easement is necessary in order to maintain access across the new, the new Shellmount Street realignment. As I mentioned, the planning commission considered this item as part of their deliberations on January 25th. They were able to make the findings of consistency with the general plan and recommended that the city council adopt the ordinance vacating Shellmount Street. The staff recommendation is that you take public testimony on this item and then you adopt a proposed resolution. That's the conclusion of my report.
Could we ask a clarifying question?
Yes. That's my usual procedure.
Is the, if we take this action, the, do you see any legal downsides in this?
No. I mean, as, as I've said here, the Shell, the, the title to transfer Shellmount Street only happens at the very end of the process. So before we get to that last bullet point there, all of those other bullet points, all those other conditions have to be met. What's important is that the improvements that City Center would be required to build, to construct and build regarding the realigned Shellmount Street would have to be done to the satisfaction of the city engineer. So that's the ultimate check that the city has, that the realigned street is up to our specifications and is consistent with the tentative map that will be approved.
I guess what we, if we approve this, in effect, what we're saying is that we like the layout and the, we would in effect be saying that the project as envisioned with the streets where they are is a good idea, no matter who owns them going forward.
Sure. I mean, the idea is that you're allowing, you know, you, you are saying that, you know, you're allowing for the, for the realigned Shellmount Street, by allowing for the realigned Shellmount Street to occur, you know, you're allowing for the improvements that will be constructed, you know, pursuant to the tentative map. And that will also certainly allow for the parcel, parcel B to be constructed adjacent to the railroad tracks.
Any other questions?
But the, part of what I'm thinking about here is that actually the recommendation from the planning commission with regard to the realignment of the street is within the context of the development agreement. So the public benefits that were part of that agreement that we now do not have in place, right, are one of the things that they used when they were evaluating this, right? It was not separate from the development agreement.
Sure. That's true. But they still had to find, you know, in finding the, in finding consistency with the general plan as part of the development agreement, they were also finding consistency with the general plan as part of the, as part of the, the new streets that would be created and the realigned Shellmount Street. So while, while there was no separate item brought before the planning commission as to the realigned Shellmount Street, as we're considering here, you know, the, part of the idea of asking the city planning commission for general plan consistency was also to include, you know, that, that finding was intended to also include general plan consistency as to the realigned Shellmount Street as well.
But general plan consistency isn't just about do the maps match?
That's right. That's right. I mean, it's not just, it's not just about that.
Right. It's about our values and our policies behind it. And the other thing that when I'm looking at this, when, to create the new Shellmount Street and create parcel B, that, again, I'm going to say this confers a tremendous benefit upon the developer and the developer does not look at parcel B in isolation. When the developer goes for financing, the developer looks at, in fact, that's the goal of the PUD is to imagine it all together, that we too, as a city council, should be imagining this all together and seeing the ways that this, right, should yield other benefits, not just a bend in the road, right? But other benefits should be conferred upon the city by taking this action. If we strip it away from any kind of negotiation or development agreements, then it's a, it's a bend in the road without those other elements. And so that's what, looking at this, right, it, we're both looking at it separately, but again, I'm going to say, the, the planning commission did not look at this separately. They looked at it within a context. And now, looking at this, right, and, and thinking about whether or not this confers a real public benefit, it might have in the context of the development agreement when we had some agreements on affordability onsite. But what does it confer to us now? Circulation? Is that enough of a public benefit for this item?
Is there any other questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing. All right. Public hearings now open. Come on forward if you wish to speak.
What button do I push?
Okay, I got to say, I agree with what Councilmember Asher just said. What this really is, is a bend in the street. Now, if you look at the plan here, is this on? Is this mic on?
Yes.
Okay. If you look at the, look at the plan here, so the way the street now travels like this, and what we're going to, we're proposing here is to make it travel like that. So the absurdity of this is, if we listen, if we listen to the staff, the street traveling like that is not in the public interest. But the street traveling like this is in the public interest. It's absurd. It's patently absurd. This is a bend in the road. There's no, circulation is not improved. It's turning of your steering wheel one, two, three times with the new configuration and turning of your steering wheel one, two times with the existing configuration. There's no circulation improvement. And it's a tautology to, to attach this to this, this development project that we just said not, at this time to. So the, the street grid that we're talking about, all that kind of increases circulation is not attached to this anymore. And so this really is a bend in the road. It doesn't improve circulation. And now I just wanted to deviate and change the subject just for a moment. I wanted to say thank you to the council for the vote you just made previous. I've lived here for 35 years. I have never seen Emeryville City Council say no to the first iteration of a development before, ever. I've never seen that. This was an historic vote. And I'm in the construction trade and there's an adage, if you're getting every single bid that you put out, you're bidding too, too low. And Emeryville up till tonight has gotten every bid essentially, if you look at it that way. And I'm really happy to see that we're growing up here now. So we just, so we're, we've been selling ourselves too low. And tonight, we're, we didn't, we've broken that, that bad tradition. And we're supposed to, in the construction industry, you're supposed to get about 75% of the projects you bid. Emeryville up till tonight, we've gotten 100%. So that means we're bidding too low. Tonight, we didn't do that. We changed the, the formula, the paradigm. I'm just really happy about that. I think this was a really, really good thing that you did here tonight. Just wanted to say thank you for that.
Any other public comment on this item? Public hearings closed. Council discussion?
I'd like to talk about the merits of adopting this street. This developer may or may not choose to build out the design. He's got permission to build parcel C that the street bends around. The basic design, whether this developer goes forward or not, is a good design for all the reasons that Ruth said. It has great, improved circulation. It's broken up the super block. It allows for a building right up against the track that could buffer sound and it's a better urban use. Say this builder isn't interested in this going forward. If we adopt this tonight, we're creating value to the site that somebody else can use. And it's also saying to future developers, look, this council sees value in a certain alignment and quality. And I think we should not think that we're going to, you know, get some edge by not doing this over this current developer. I think it's, it's totally neutral, but it, it creates value to the site for any future use of it.
Well, but then your, your votes are kind of inconsistent, right? Because if you wanted this, then you should have gotten all the other benefits that you, that were in the development agreement. The point is, is that, that I'm making, is that this street is valuable to this developer, right? That it has a tremendous value to the developer and that we weren't realizing enough public benefit. If you vote to just do this, right, you do it without any of the agreements. You don't get the onsite affordable. You don't get any, anything else. What I'm hoping that we can do finally here in Emeryville is be every bit as smart as a developer. I would like to do that. I would like to come here and say that this adds tremendous value to this site, that double-facing retail, retail that we don't even know if it's going to be locally serving, that we don't even know if it's going to be the things that we've talked about, like a co-op or the other things that we say are important to us, right? That we say to the developer that in this process of negotiation, that the, what we saw in that DA was not good enough, right? And I don't think that that, just like Diane said, that's not a way to say that we do not want any development in town. That is not what we're saying. We're not saying that we don't ever want in, in Shellmount Street to be like this, but that we have to be smart about this, right? That you don't, to vote on this now would be to just give this to the developer without getting any kind of public benefit in return. And we just talked about an agreement in which we decided that there wasn't enough public benefit even with this street.
Well, I think a development agreement adds a lot of security to building anything.
It does.
And the alignment of the street means a lot less than a development agreement.
It does.
And I think we want this, you know, this developer may not be interested in this site, but if this site will be of value to someone going forward, perhaps a little more intensively developed, maybe not, maybe.
But then that person can come to us. That person can come to us. This is about what's in front of us right now. And so I'm, when I'm looking at this, right, the vote that we just took around Shellmount, right, is whether or not, and this, looking at it, even looking at the title on the last flyer is talking about a street exchange. The city is giving something. If we just give something and don't have a development agreement on the If we just give something and don't have a development agreement on the other end of it, that's it, right? We just gave it away for nothing. And also, I want to say that the development agreement in Emeryville, I've been looking at this, and in other cities, it doesn't work this way. It's so blind and weird, right? So the development agreement gets a small preview in front of the planning commission, and then it shows up here, right? That's, there's not a lot of time in between those two things, right? And then also, we don't have time to have any kind of meaningful discussion so that it doesn't feel like a negotiation. It feels like an up or down vote, right? And so I, you know, I would strongly suggest that to do this, Scott, undermines your earlier vote, right? That
You, you've made your point.
That you're giving away what we just talked about we see as valuable.
All right.
Yes.
Yeah, I would like to say, Scott, I support what you've said because I believe you're, you're seeing these two things can be separate. It doesn't necessarily undercut the vote on the development agreement. When, when you say, Jack, that the city's just giving it away and they're not getting anything by this realignment of Shellmount Street, I believe that to be inaccurate. Number two, we're gonna get a better, better street, better circulation, but also, we are almost creating a parcel, which is now not very valuable. It's, it's not really buildable. We're creating a parcel that's going to generate taxes for the future because there will be a dense development on there, as Mayor Atkins has said. So it's not as though the city is just throwing pennies on the ground for people. This serves the public benefit just as much as it does the developer. So I support you, Scott, and is that a motion for the resolution?
Wait, wait, wait. We have more discussion here.
I'd like to speak.
Yeah.
I also want to speak to the importance of negotiation. I feel Emeryville is growing as a city and that we are gaining some self-esteem, and we are able to see the value in what we have to offer, and I do see a benefit to moving Shellmount. And I see that benefit as being conferred to the public, but I also see it as being conferred to the developer. And as such, I can't see why we would view this in isolation of the development agreement. I think we can express tonight that, and I think many of us have, that this realignment is beneficial, that the circulation would improve, that the retail situation would improve, that density would improve. I think these are all very good things that if we say we're to go back to the drawing table on the development agreement, these would be part of a negotiation. That's how I would see it.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, is there a motion on the?
I'd move the resolution.
Resolution. Is there a second? There's no second, so it dies for lack of a second. So thank you all for going through a rather painful process here. Or maybe joyous for some, I don't know. But anyway, this takes us to